I'd like to call this special meeting to order at 7:09. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fire evacuation announcement. You've got double doors behind you. Head out the double doors in the back and out to the lawn. You have two double doors my left, your right. Go down the stairs and out to the parking lot. Roll call?
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Mrs. Kushman?
Here.
Mr. Hamery?
Here.
Mr. Lebonk?
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Here.
Madam Chair?
Here.
Board guests?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have full agenda tonight, but we're going to start with the most important ones, and those are our Buzz Robotics students. So I want to ask our Buzz advisor Carolyn Marr and Lauren Jefferson, along with several students, to come up. This is a group that we like to bring in front of the board every year, and you'd be amazed at what they do. And in the world of not bringing a lot of guests, they were the most eager to get here as soon as they can. So I welcome our Buzz Robotics team.
Hi. Whoop, nope. No mic. Hello? Yes, fantastic. All right, so I'm Carolyn Marr. This is Lauren Jefferson. I'm a math teacher at Enfield High School. Ms. Jefferson is a school counselor, and we're just going to go ahead and let our students introduce themselves and tell you what we've been up to this year.
They can actually use the one in front of them. You just have to make sure the red light is on.
Do you want to talk?
Got it.
I'm Aiden Howell. I'm a senior.
My name is Kathia Diaz. I'm a freshman.
I'm Selma Fajah. I'm a freshman.
All right. This school year Buzz was thrilled to be able to return to in-person meetings and competitions. After a year of being a virtual team, we're really excited to get back into our facilities at the Enfield Annex and, once again, be able to participate in the first robotics competition.
We started our year recruiting eight new team members, including six freshmen, one sophomore, and one senior. We met weekly throughout the fall to participate in team building and learn the basics of programming, CAD, machining, wiring, and how to stay safe while building our robot.
In January, we found out the details of our game, Rapid React, where robots weighing up to 125 pounds launch giant inflatable tennis balls into high and low goals, and then climb onto metal balls to score extra points. We met five days a week, including Saturdays, at the Enfield Annex to design, prototype, and build our robot, which we named Davis after a former mentor of the team.
This year, we also paid special attention to our robot and team aesthetic. We're very proud of the design. One of our students came up for our T-shirts and buttons to match this year's theme. We also all worked together to make our robot fit with our team branding and bring a new level of team spirit to our competitions and activities.
Our first competition was the North Shore District Event, where we were able to travel overnight as a team to Redding, Massachusetts. This gave us a chance to bond as a team, as well as to experience making rapid improvements and adjustments to our robot and code in a real-time situation.
Buzz had a very successful event, improving over the course of the competition and eventually making the quarterfinals. Additionally, for our work on the team and robot aesthetic, Buzz was presented with the imagery award.
Our second competition was the Hartford District Event at Hartford Public -- yeah, at Hartford Public High School. For this event, Buzz was given an opportunity to give back to the first community by volunteering to put together the field for the event.
We learned a lot about how work goes into making events run, and we were very proud of ourselves for our contribution. Once again, we were able to make the playoffs, and we earned a second imagery award.
Because of our success at our competitions, we were able to qualify for the New England District Championships held at the Biggie Fairgrounds. Qualifying for this event was our season goal, and we were incredibly proud.
Our team and our robot performed very well at the event, at one point ranking second in the field of 40 teams. We were able to make it to the semifinals, which was our best finish of the year, and finished 41st in the district of 182 teams, which places us in the top 25 percent.
Having the opportunity to finish a robot and compete in person was an amazing learning experience for us. For most of us, this year's was the first chance to attend a competition, and we cannot wait to go back. We would like to thank the Enfield Board of Education for your continued support of Buzz Robotics. Without your support, our team would not be able to exist. Thank you.
Now, I'm sure we all have some questions and comments for you. So, Mr. Ryder?
So, I wanted to ask, how much time is spent during the school day on a project like this? And in contrast to that, how much time are you investing outside of school for a project like this? I mean, this is almost the equivalent of a sport or being in the spring play. Like, how much time do you guys actually put into this, just so everybody who's home watching is aware?
A lot. So during the school day, it isn't actually much. We don't do much during the school day besides probably idly thinking about it a lot instead of our own work. But on a normal year, it's like 27 hours a week that we spend out of school at Fermi. This year, we cut down a little bit, so it was 18 hours a week, I think.
To elaborate a little bit on what Aiden said, we prioritize our education of Buzz. Everyone is expected to maintain their grades, so we do not work that much during our school hours. However, we do take it seriously during build season, where we go every single day, with the exception of the season where we took Sundays off and one weekday, for three hours every day, for about nine weeks.
Ms. Pickett?
I loved, A, you talking about your project and robotics and all of that, but what I also heard in there was things around team building and community service. And I wanted to hear a little bit more about recruiting new members and how you go about that, and how do you get folks to join?
So, this is personally my first year in any type of team, so recruiting some new people is something I feel like I could be helpful with. We're taking recruiting a lot more seriously, trying to -- recently, we spoke at the eighth grade orientation for freshmen, trying to join and present with our robot named Davis to our team, and just trying to get the word out a lot more, since I know that this year we had a little bit of trouble with that. We're trying to improve our best we can.
Mr. Hamery?
So, first off, congratulations. That semifinals, and I wrote down 41 out of, was it 280, you said?
180.
180. I gave you an extra 100. So, congratulations on that. That's incredible. Appreciate all the efforts that went into it from this team and from mentors that made it possible. I can see in the picture here that there are some additional classmates that are not here. Please, not everybody watches these meetings, I know, so please pass along my congratulations to the entire team. And I do wish you all the best in recruiting. I noticed that you do all the hard work, including moving in, moving out, getting all the stuff into the building and setting it all up, and I can appreciate what the effort is that goes into all of that for each of these gigs. So, again, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Ms. Akri?
I just want to say, congratulations. Kudos to all your creativity and innovation. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yeah, so, you know, looking at your competitions, it appears that, you know, you progressively did better as you moved on. So, did you implement design changes, design improvements, and incorporated them into your Buzz Robotics?
Please go ahead.
I'm sorry?
You can continue.
Oh, yeah, no, that was really my question. My question is, you progressively got better, and is that the result of implementing design changes?
So, the main core design of the robot, for the most part, stayed the same. But after, like, our first few matches, it was really clear we needed tweaks, we needed to change stuff up, we needed to fix things, especially when we broke them. We had to fix a lot of broken stuff, too. But a lot of our matches really showed us, like, some of the flaws in our robot, and we spent some time trying to put together ways to fix them, which was kind of tough because we -- between our first and second competition, we had, like, three weeks to work on the robot, and we did what we could from there. And then after our second competition, we had maybe, like, a two-day turnaround. But I think we still managed to work, like, when we started at our third event, I still think we were probably a better robot than we were at our second.
Okay. And one last comment. Was it -- do you want to say something about the design improvements?
Sure. So, in the beginning, when we were making prototypes, we could definitely see things that we were, like, we were going to change. But like Aiden said, when we were actually in the matches, you could tell certain things broke during the matches, and we were able to fix them because we realized the mistakes that we made. But I think it's a really important part, realizing, like, things that we could fix and things that we could improve on the robot, because it helped us win a lot of matches and clearly get a lot of awards.
Just one final detail. We competed with a lot of robots, as you heard, about 40 each competition, almost every single time, new robots. There was always something to learn from each and your every single design, so even if we can't implement everything we wanted to this year, it's definitely a learning opportunity if we have the chance to next year to start implementing new designs and new ideas from everything we learned.
And just one last comment, which was that I thought it was very encouraging that you've got many new freshmen that you recruited. So, that says a lot about Buzz Robotics in the future, that, you know, your freshmen will just progress and get better, so that's very exciting, and look forward to seeing what good things will come out of Buzz Robotics.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Hamery?
I'll be really quick, Jerry. Just one thing, I wanted to toss out a name, and as you were talking about the repairing and moving forward, there's a guy by the name of Lester Paulson that I would encourage you to look into. He's better known as Les Paul. He made the Les Paul guitar. That's his name on all the guitars. And he's one of the most prolific inventors in the music world ever. So, I would encourage you to look into what he's done over the years and all that he's contributed to, everything in that process of inventing. Thank you.
Dr. Kalman?
I just want to lend my voice. Congratulations. You folks are doing great, great work. I guess my question is, is Buzz Robotics, over the years, has it been growing? Has it been diminishing in numbers, impacted adversely by COVID? And what got you into Buzz Robotics? Would that be a strategy for recruiting other people?
So, that's interesting. I know the answer to most of that. Our team has a limit of 25 people, which I don't know how long that limit has been in place, but I don't think there's been a year on the team besides last year where it wasn't at 25 people. Last year, we lost some seniors. We came back. I think we were closer to 19, but as soon as we started the season, we were back up to our cap. There's usually enough people interested to fill it up. And honestly, I feel like if somebody else wanted to be on the team, we might exceed the cap. It doesn't seem like that hard of a limit to me. I feel like we're always open to new people joining the team. And as far as how I joined the team, I was -- Ms. Marr was my geometry teacher freshman year, so on the board, there would always be stuff about Buzz Robotics and the FTC team. So, I just ended up asking about it and then joining the team after that.
As a freshman, because of COVID, we weren't able to have, like, certain -- like, didn't show us in the beginning of the year, like, different teams we can join into. So, passing by the hallway and seeing, like, the small little posters of Buzz, and you could see, like, things you could join. And then after, like, actually going to the first meeting, we were able to learn, like, a lot of things about STEM, like, how in-depth it is and how much you can learn. Like, just by our first year, we learned so many things that I didn't even know going into this. And I'm just really happy that, like, it's really inclusive, and you don't need to know anything, and I think that's the best part about it.
One specific person managed to let me know about Buzz, and that was really my motivation to start. I always wanted to join a team, but sports weren't never my thing, so I thought, why not robotics? So, even if it's just putting a flyer in across them, like Aiden said, or just saying an announcement during the morning, really spreading the word really helps get people who don't know what they want interested in trying something new.
Very good. I just want to ask, so I was wondering if you guys were able to do in-person competitions this year, because I think last year they were virtual, correct?
Yes.
And so, as the senior representing tonight, I'm sure you were so happy that you got to get back to some in-person competitions this year, seeing as how, you know, I'm assuming what happened sophomore year, you never really got to finish, and then junior year, and now your senior year, you can finish off.
Yeah. So, my freshman year was the last year we had competitions. So, I got, like, I got a taste of it there, and it was really fun. I had a really good time at those competitions. And then my sophomore year, I think everything shut down, like, two weeks or a week before our competition, which was really unfortunate, but I was really happy to get back to competition this year, especially as a senior, being, like, so involved in everything, and I got to be on the drive team. So, like, I, you know, every competition, I was always checked in. I got to be working on the robot and trying my best to get us far in the competition.
Just something else, the drive team is the people who drive the robot, so that includes the people who -- well, it's very specific. People who shoot the balls, who move the robot around with controllers, people who take care of fixing the robot when things get broken. Just something to say.
No, very good. I do have to say, the way that you three presented tonight was extremely professional and extremely conversational, and that's really hard to achieve, especially when you're sitting in front of nine people, and you should be really proud of yourselves. Your enthusiasm for Buzz shines through. And so, although you're going to be moving on, we do have some freshmen that I'm sure we'll be recruiting. And I loved how you said, you know, you didn't really have to know exactly everything, but you can come in and learn and really learn about STEM. So, I think that's amazing. So, we're very proud of you, and I'm glad that you got some competitions. You placed in every single one, and it was a huge accomplishment. So, congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Marr? I know you're trying to get a picture. Do you want to come up here and take a picture of them?
Do you want to be in it? Yeah. Do you want to -- do you guys want to be in it? We'll take the picture for it. Scott will end up with your photo board. There you go. I'll let Scott take it, please.
Ready?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's a couple options there.
Thank you again. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before they leave, Madam Chair, I think they're underselling the commitment question that Mr. Ryder asked.
Agreed.
A snow day I call does not go unnoticed when I get a call from Buzz saying, does that mean we can't build tonight? And the answer is, why did you ask me? Now I have to say no. So, there's your answer, guys. But thank you.
I'm just waiting for Hosway. Right. Hosway Irizari, ERFC Director?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just have to apologize to Hosway publicly that this was well overdue. I think our first meeting was about a year ago, and I said I'd like to bring you, introduce you to the community at a public board meeting, and here we are nearly a year later. So, Hosway has been an invaluable partner to us over his short time here, and I'm sure you will come to like him as much as I do. So, I'm sorry, Hosway, but here you are finally. Better late than never. It's okay. Glad to be here. Just give me one second. As many of you guys may not know, ERFC is a nonprofit organization that has been serving the Enfield community since 1994. Our mission is to team with the community, schools, and families to grow resilient children. Through innovative community collaborations, we help children learn, reach their goals, and contribute to their communities. We try to build future leaders here in Enfield, starting early as school-aged children. We provide a variety of programs for kids here in Enfield community. One of the unique, fascinating things about our programs, all of our programs are licensed programs through OEC. We provide positive role models and train staff for children during out-of-school time. We partnership with Enfield Schools and align our after-school academic support with school day curriculum. We ensure that all children provide an opportunity to learn and explore, and ensure that all children explore interests and develop friendships and fund safe, encouraging environment. One of the things that a lot of people in the community don't know is that we do provide a lot of subsidized assistance to families. It would not be possible if we did not receive funding from Connecticut After-School Network in the 21st century that provides us to be able to provide over 150 kids with subsidized $5-a-week programs after school. We also provide financial assistance to a lot of the families, and we also accept care for kids for families. One of the things that we do throughout the year is do an annual campaign in our events that helps us to be able to provide financial assistance to families that don't fit the free and reduced lunch. Or right in the middle, we're still able to assist those families to participate in our programs. We provide homework tutoring for kids in after-school program. Our studies have shown that during our programs, student grades improve in core subjects. Teachers report that students complete homework on time and that homework is correct. Students report that they better understand their homework assignments. As students practice what they learn after school, fewer students have need remedial help. Some of the things that we do in after-school is our reading, STEAM, sports, literacy, and team building. We provide a safe place for students to continue learning after school while parents are at work. We also align the school day curriculum with after-school activities to work with families to support their children's social, emotional, and academic growth. We also provide during the school year an after-school program for middle school students. This year, we changed the name and called it a team program for kids. This program is funded by the after-school program. Our goal for next year is to provide 100 after-school children in middle school and after-school program. And this year, we are going to be providing the program for free for the kids for middle Some of the things that the students do, they do some STEAM activities and team-building activities throughout the program. And each week, students learn life skills. It's very important during those times, at that age, we start getting them to think of what they can be in the future, what they can do in the future. This year, we are providing our summer camp program, which is a fun educational summer camp program for seven weeks for the children of Prudence Grandal. Children are having an opportunity to go on weekly field trips, build self-confidence and independence, creativity, and practice in sports and educational enrichment programs throughout the summer. One of the great programs that we also have is for high school students, which is our counselors in training. It's a volunteer program that teaches the kids how to work in the field of childcare, and it teaches them the responsibilities. So, they're assigned to a counselor throughout the summer, and they assist them with the children. And it gives them also an opportunity to leg up when they're looking for a job for the next year. We are also starting some ERFC Saturday programs, some cooking programs, science programs, STEAM programs, Saturday programs, craft programs, and so sports programs. This is new to ERFC, so just be patient with us throughout the year as we try to build these programs. Our programs provide children an opportunity to build self-confidence, build fundamental skills, sportsmanship, and learn to work with others. Children experience a variety of physical activities. The STEAM arts and crafts and cooking, our programs teach children to take thoughtful risk, engage in hands-on learning, persist in problem-solving, and embrace collaboration work through creativity. This year, we are also doing our summer backpack and school supply event. This year, we moved it up to do our summer celebration. It's going to have a bunch of vendors. We're going to have activities, nonprofit organizations. And last year, we gave over 1,500 book bags and school supplies to children. We're hopefully going to exceed that this year. We also provide an amazing program, which is called Summer Meals Program, which runs from June 27th to August 12th. It's actually going to be held at Prudence Grandal. It's a free meals for families to come and eat lunch that may have a difficult time during the summer feeding their families. We also provide throughout the year some free family nights. We provide free food for families and a variety of activities for parents and families. Last week, we had about 60 families come to ERFC, had an ice cream social, because we're very excited for that. Some of the collaborations that we do throughout the year is with Enfield Public Schools, Enfield Public Library, Enfield School PTOs, Enfield Social Services, Family Resource Center, Youth Services, KAI, and Field Food Shelf, which provides us with the food during this school year. Cox, we were surprised on Thursday by Cox, so we received a $10,000 grant from Cox to be able to do some robotics programs with our middle school after-school program and our summer camp program, so we're very excited. We also receive funding from United Way, which is to serve our first, second, and third graders with reading. So, we have also applied for a grant for there. Hopefully, we'll be receiving that this year to be able to continue providing the program after school. And if you guys have gone by the schools, you have seen some wonderful little bridges, thanks to Carol Revis Memorial Foundation for providing us some funding to be able to do that, and we'll be cleaning those up throughout the school year and doing some gardening activities with the kids. Educational resources for children, children with a place to go during out-of-school time succeed in life, and that's why we're here. And thank you, guys, for your continued support, especially the Board of Education, Chris, for continuing your support and helping us continue our mission. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Mr. Ryder?
Just a clarifying question. So, you don't have to be an ERFC student throughout the school year to sign up for the summer camps or the Saturday ERFC programs. Is that correct?
Yep. It's open to Enfield and all surrounding communities.
Excellent. And then my other question is, I know you mentioned after-school, ERFC after-school, after-school, but I also wanted to let everybody know that's here tonight or watching, that it's the before-school program that's also important, because parents and caregivers sometimes have to go to work prior to the bus picking up their kids. So, the fact that you have pre-before-school care, not preschool care, also benefits parents that might work, like a seven-to-three shift versus a nine-to-five. And I just wanted to thank you for being in our schools. I've heard nothing but good things about ERFC. I've worked with them on dozens of events. Fortunately, I work from home, so we didn't need ERFC for the care that you provide to our students, but I want to thank you for doing that, because a lot of our families need this. And everybody that I've met at ERFC over the last 10 years, and sometimes the faces change, but the care doesn't. And not just yourself, but your predecessors have always done a very good job vetting their candidates and getting adults, young adults, in there to work with the kids. And I've heard nothing but great things about ERFC. So, thank you. From me.
Mr. Hamery?
I'm going to sound a little bit like Scott there, because my family's been able to utilize ERFC in the younger years, and it came in extremely well-placed with our schedule, because for exactly that purpose, pick-up and drop-off with a school day was challenging without ERFC's services available. And all of that you mentioned, we benefited from in the same And all of that you mentioned, we benefited from in that time, so I appreciate that. So I'm a big fan of ERFC for that reason. I do want to ask something of an unfair question, though, so I apologize in advance, but you mentioned that the cooking thing is going to happen, and I'm wondering if you have some examples of what they might be doing in those programs? I'm kind of curious.
And if you need a judge, he's wondering if you-
Taste tester.
Maybe an ulterior motive, I'm just saying.
So we actually had an opportunity to run the program this year at ERFC. They did us a little, because it was ERFC, we don't have a full kitchen, so we had to be a little bit creative. So they got to do little PTOs with the kids because they were younger age, we couldn't have an oven or anything like that. But we did teach them little fundamentals about cooking and safety and cooking, and the kids, one time, they got to do some fudge pudding themselves.
And that's ultimately my concern, because I know that there's going to be some limitations in what you can do, and it's going to require a lot of creativity, and then taking that creativity and bringing it to the age level of your audience. So I'm excited for the program to take on that additional offering, and I appreciate that effort as well, so thank you very much. I like that a lot.
So I would say, going off of what Josh had to say, this made me think of Ms. Goki. She was a teacher at Stowe, and then she moved to Crandall. And when it would get to the last days of school and it was really hot, she would, you know, try to fry an egg on the sidewalk, or she would bring in a solar-powered hot dog machine and try to see, and I just thought that was funny, and I just had visions of that when you were talking about having to get creative with the kids. I don't remember if the egg ever fried, but, you know, it was worth a try, right?
But one of the activities that middle school kids did about a week ago, they actually did an egg drop. So the kids in the middle school program were so excited to be able to do that, and you could see them testing to their little contraption to make sure that their egg was going to be safe the next day. Some succeeded, some didn't, but it was a great experiment for them to be able to do and figure out what they could do.
Yeah. Well, I wanted to say that I have seen, based on what you're saying in your presentation, I've definitely seen ERFC not only grow, but has evolved in what you're offering, and you're getting more specific. And, you know, the homework help and the before and after-school care is certainly important, and having homework tutors is hugely helpful because kids have busy lives. Now that we're getting back to normal, they have busy lives after school, so I'm sure it's helpful for the parents that the homework is done probably by the time they're picked up, or the majority of it is. And the lunch bunch, I remember when it used to be at St. Patrick's Church, and so now it's at Prudence Crandall, and I think that's a wonderful option for the families in the summer. And then the teen program, I was happy to hear about this because I know JFK is like that weird year. They're kind of old enough to stay by themselves, but do you really want them to stay by themselves? And I remember going to tour it when it was at JFK with Claire, and the kids that were there loved it. You know, they had the kitchens there at the time, and then they were making movies and videos, and they were using the school, and it was really-
Stop-motion animation.
Yeah, it was really great. So I love that this is, you know, kind of spans across up through K through eighth, if it needs to be, so I really appreciate that, so I wanted to say that. Did you say you had another question?
Yes, you said that you supplement a lot of the enrollment fees that would normally fall on the parents with fundraisers, et cetera. Do you have any fundraisers coming up?
We do have our, on Friday, if you haven't bought your tickets, Toast of the Town. It's one of our big fundraisers to help for the scholarships and also to help kids go to summer camp.
Excellent.
And tickets are, I think tomorrow they're closing ticket sales.
And they're on the ERFC website?
Yes, ERFC website.
You also do the Farm-to-table event in the fall, which is a great event to attend as well.
Yep, and we're planning to do that again this year.
Very good. But yeah, no, I thank you so much. I love that one of the things I get to see from being on the board so long is that when people come in and you start to see that program evolve, that's obviously what we want to see and changing with the times. I did have one question. If there's a half-day at the school, do you still stay open for the remainder of the day? Do you still take the kids?
Yes, we have our staff there on half-days. And if, for some reason, schools close early due to snow and they don't close down all the buildings, we still provide care.
Okay.
And we also provide, on school vacation, we provide our vacation days.
Okay, I was going to ask that as well. So you're still providing even though there's no school in session for that?
Yes, on certain days that we're able to use the school, so.
Very, very good. So, well, thank you so much.
I think all of you guys are welcome to attend our after-school program. If you guys want to schedule a day to come and visit or visit our summer camp, we'll be happy to have all of you guys come and see the program in action.
I think we'd like that, it would be very good. So yeah, we appreciate it. We can reach out to you and set up a time when our individual schedules work, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next guest, Altresa Cox Blackwell, Director of Educational Equity.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Keeping with my theme of long overdue introductions, I'd like to welcome our Director of Educational Equity, Altresa Cox Blackwell. I know she's going to share a little bit about some of the work she's been doing since she's taken on this new role. I would just like to add a disclaimer, which I'm sure she'll touch upon, but in case she doesn't, those of you who know Altresa, when she first started in this role, I shared with her that you don't have to figure it all out today. This is something we're going to build, and she didn't listen. She, as you will find out pretty shortly, she's been hard at work since the day she came over, but I couldn't be more happy that she's in this role and that, you know, reaffirming our knowledge that she is absolutely the right person to lead us in this endeavor. So we'll formally welcome Altresa and allow her to take it from here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. No PowerPoint presentation, we're going old-school for this, but I want to say good evening to all of the members, Superintendent Dreszek, and our families and community that are watching. Thank you for having me tonight, giving me an opportunity to introduce my role as the Director of Educational Equity. Since starting in January, I've already had the pleasure of either communicating with or working with a few of the board members, so thank you. There's a formal definition of equity, which is being fair, just, and impartial, which extends beyond sameness or providing the same to all, eliminating discrimination and all forms of bias, fairly distributing, or allocating, or redistributing, or reallocating access, resources, opportunity, and participation to reach an equal outcome for all. There's also a formal definition of educational equity, which is ensuring educational policies, practices, and resources that are responsive to all, so each individual has access to, meaningfully participates in, and has positive outcomes from high-quality learning experiences that reduce disparities, provide each student with what they need, and empower each student regardless of individual demographics. However, educational equity isn't one size fits all, or the same everywhere in every school district. So for this reason, we're beginning with all administrators contributing to the definition or the term "educational equity" as it relates to us, Enfield Public Schools. In other words, what does being an equitable school district look like in Enfield? We communicate that using a common language, with one collective voice, and our commitment to what we believe the barriers are and what's inequitable. Once identified, we will create a district plan with related school plans to address each barrier with the goal of reducing achievement disparities and improving the educational experience for all of Enfield students. Our equity lens focus includes the areas of teaching and learning, staff development, talent management, school climate, resources, and collaboration, collaboration with all stakeholders, families, community members, and businesses. As a side note, I was really impressed with what ERFC is doing. I can't wait to collaborate with them. This family engagement is very important. So as Mr. Dreszek said, even though he encouraged me to begin by acclimating myself slowly, he knew I'd find that difficult to do. So to date, my activities have included, but aren't limited to, surveying all school principals and leaders, meeting with them one-to-one, visiting all schools with a lens of equity as it relates to school climate and family engagement. Every school is doing something, and that's wonderful. Moving forward, the goal is to coordinate those individual school efforts with a district plan, clear vision and purpose, data-driven decision-making, strategic planning, as well as building and maintaining relationships with all stakeholders. I've worked with KITE, contributing to the planning of their community conversation on equity for families, participating on Family Engagement Strategy Plan and Board of Ed Stakeholders Advisory, where I learned about the work KITE is doing with Peg Oliviera, I hope I said her name right, from the Gisele Institute at Yale around family engagement. And I participated in my first three-to-three equity meeting, so I found out that means from age three to grade three. With our community's Enfield Mental Health and Wellness, I was invited and got to participate in their second work group meeting. With Stowe Early Learning Center, most recently, I've been invited to participate on one of the teams for this year's Head Start Self-Assessment. At JFK, I've joined them for the State Education Resource Center, or CIRC's, equity training of their equity team and the entire staff, where the goal is increasing capacity for the team to facilitate conversations relating to equity. Enfield High School, where my equity journey began, I continue my involvement with their equity leadership team, their student equity leadership team, their parent equity meetings, and annual Black History Symposium sponsored by the Social Studies Department. Connecticut has a network of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, or DEI, directors that was formally organized last year. I joined this professional group in January. We meet monthly, we've already had a retreat, working on our vision, goals, and objectives. We work in partnership with the Connecticut State Department of Education and Connecticut Association of Schools. Almost immediately, I volunteered to work on a subcommittee reviewing a draft of an equity audit crafted for Connecticut schools. I joined the Connecticut Association of School Personnel Administrators and participated in this year's in-person two-day conference, which included a presentation by the Connecticut State Department of Education's Talent Office, where they provided us with updates on their office successes and challenges regarding emergency certifications, extending it through next school year, teacher shortages and hiring, as well as holding their first symposium on increasing educator diversity and more. There's People Empowering People, or PEPP Spanish program. Last week, I accepted an invitation to join their weekly meeting comprised of students, parents, and community members. There, I introduced myself, and I heard about their program, their successes, their challenges, and they shared with me how they thought I can assist them. I'm excited to say I've now formed a partnership with this group and at that meeting with some of my former students. It was nice to see them there, some who are still at the high school and some who had I've also participated in various other conferences and webinars too numerous to mention, all with an equity focus. I've attended recruitment career fairs, both virtually and in person, and continue to connect with local, regional, and national organizations regarding educational equity. So to summarize, in my role supporting the Board of Ed policy on equity and diversity, I intend to be visible, to listen, as well as provide leadership, guidance, and resources to our district's educators, administrators, students, and families that focus on addressing, again, achievement disparities by promoting strategies and practices, which will lead to closing the opportunity gap and supporting learning communities that provide equitable opportunities to all students and families. This is an ongoing process. We will continue to encourage family engagement and partnerships. Enfield's diversity of race, culture, language, socioeconomic status, and more, they're all a complement and strength to this community. I'm focused on our students elevating their voices and on assisting to provide each student with what is needed. I'm very passionate and committed to educational equity in our public schools and Enfield community. And if you've ever received an email from me, I have a quote at the bottom by Coretta Scott King, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." So thank you for listening, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Amanda, Ms. Pickett?
So I've been waiting for this moment for a very long time. As a mom, gosh, over probably a year and a half ago, I came to the Board of Ed, and I sat and I read EdSite data. I'm looking at the members who are sitting up here. I read EdSite data about our disproportionality in our data and what are we doing to support our students. So to see that we have moved in this direction, where we actually have somebody leading this work, and the broad definition of equity and how we're addressing that systemically at the district level and at each school, to me, just sounds amazing. So thank you so much for being willing to take this position. Something that you said that really sparked interest to me was elevating student voice. And you don't have to answer this, but I would love to kind of hear, how will students be instrumental in kind of your plans around building that district plan and the contextual support plans for each of the schools? And what would the student's role in that be?
I can tell you what's already been done, if that's okay, if I can respond now? Okay. So right before I left Enfield High, we launched the Student Leadership Equity Team. I was involved with a focus group sponsored by the RE Center, which is an equity center located in Hartford. They sponsored a focus group for students and for families, and then a separate one for administrators. I shared that information with JFK and with the high school. The focus group was held during the school day, so JFK wasn't able to juggle their schedule, but Enfield High was, and two students actually participated. And the topic of the session was on giving them an opportunity to share how they thought school education could be more equitable for them. I also know that there is a student equity group sponsored by Connecticut Association of Schools. I participated in a webinar where the students presented, and my goal for next year is to see how we can get our students involved in that. And then if, with time, there's a way to create student leadership groups at the intermediate level, I'm looking forward to doing that as well. Oh, and one other thing, there was a recommendation that we look at doing a student book club regarding the area of equity. And so Principal Clark and I already have a book in our hands to read and see if that recommended book is appropriate. If not, we'll find something else and see if we can get students interested in reading. So that's just a couple of the ways, and I'm sorry if I'm long-winded.
Is your mic still on? I just-
Yes, so I'll move up closer. I do hear it's louder now, sorry about that.
Dr. Kalman?
Thank you for being here today. It's a real pleasure. Actually, we've met already at the Mental Health- Actually, we've met already at the mental health meeting, the second one. And that's what I wanted to ask you about. Do we, just looking at mental health through a diversity lens, which is, I think, something that traditionally, mental health hasn't been very, historically, it hasn't been very, very good at. So the question that I have is specifically, do we have a diverse social worker and other mental health specialist workforce? If not, do you have any ideas about improving upon that? And do these folks have adequate training in the field of diversity? I guess, if you have, again, if you have any thoughts about that.
So currently, our social workers aren't that diverse. Are you talking about for the town or at school level?
School.
Because there's a difference. Okay. So yes, diversity does exist at the school level. And so I can't speak regarding the training for them, I can only tell you that going forward, one of my other assignments is providing professional development for all of Enfield Public Schools staff. And so some of it has been going, that was what I had touched on when I said something's being done at all of the schools. It may vary what's being done at some of the schools, for example, may have done anti-bias training. However, going forward, I'm looking forward to providing additional resources and information for them.
Great, because I guess, good to strike when the iron is hot. Our budget, I think, allows for the hiring of a psych, correct me if I'm wrong, a psychology worker in every school? And if that's the case, be really important for those folks to be well-versed in the area of equity and diversity.
A social worker in every school, we already have it.
Okay.
Yes, so it kind of connected, yeah.
You had also mentioned something about the mental health and diversity. And what you'll notice is with some of our more at-risk groups, that means everything, the percentage is just higher, and so we have to look for ways that we can reach out and connect with them to make sure that they are aware of the supports that are already in place.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Good evening, thanks for coming. I think you highlighted a point that is going to be one of your focus areas of educational equity. And I find that important because as a district, if we're going to succeed in higher test scores or improving our numbers district-wide, we need the whole student body to be involved in that. And I think it sounds like you'll take numbers or figure out where those gaps may be in certain educational areas, and who may be struggling within particular groups. And by doing that, hopefully, we can raise those lower scores, which will then equate to helping out the district as a whole. So I'm encouraged by that, and I look forward to see what we can do to figure out who those lower achieving, where those lower achieving areas might be, and how we can raise those to improve our district as a whole.
Okay, I have a few comments. So I would attend the parent equity team meetings at Enfield High, which I learned so much from attending those meetings, and I learned how much the staff was getting involved in, as far as equity and diversity and inclusion, and they wanted to be educated and well-versed in it so that they could help at the high school level. I think what you said, when you said you went school by school, that's important, because I think I have said quite a few times that I love what they're doing at the high school level, but I really want to see it like pre-K through the high school. Because I think, you know, we take our youngest learners and, you know, we start to learn from there. And so now you're partnering with Kite. I'm also, the Mental Health Committee, that's another program that's evolved, so I love that you're able to partner with them and have a voice on there as well for the educational equity. There was something else I wanted to say. Oh, when you said you went school by school, I think it's important because one school may be dealing with something a little bit differently than another school, but you're sharing all those ideas and you're kind of bridging them all together so that there's a plan or different things that you can do, because it's not going to be unique to every situation. So I just really appreciate the fact that you are branching out and owning this role and really embracing the whole pre-K through 12 idea. And I know you read a lot, because I always talk about it in the parent equity, but you've been very busy attending conferences and getting into some networks, so.
Yes. Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. So not only is there a lot of work being done at the high school, there's a lot of work being done at Stowe Early Learning Center. I can't say enough about Jaclyn Valley. I'm so impressed with her. I went to share resources with her, and she shared them right back with me. And it seems like every Kite meeting that I attend, she's there as well. So there's a lot going on. So we have the bookends, and it's working on the levels in between.
Right, and I think that we recognize it will take time, and it will, there'll be some, you know, growing pains and learning strategies, but I think we're positioned in a good place to move forward, and I'm appreciative of that, so, yeah. Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Altrissa. And just before you go, because now that I've finally welcomed you in this new role of the community, first of all, I won the bingo, then Amanda's hand will go up first for questions, but I was joking, I was kidding. But you brought up a point, and I just, I think it's important for the community to know a few things. Most importantly, when I first had this conversation with Altrissa about moving this initiative forward, she was steadfast that there would still be interaction with kids, or she wasn't going to do it. And that, to me, was the, again, the convincing fashion of, okay, this is, I knew she was the right person beforehand, I definitely know that she is the right person now. But the other thing that was kind of touched upon briefly, I know Altrissa did a good job, not bad for telling you to calm down with everything you shared that you've been doing thus far, although I'm not surprised. But this is a district-wide initiative, and I think Altrissa touched upon that in a great way, that, you know, there's a lot happening at Stowe, there's a lot happening, let's say all our schools aren't doing something. But we, as a district, have to embed this work in everything that we do for our kids. And as Jonathan mentioned, you know, all of our kids have different needs, and we have to do a better job of identifying those and giving our kids the resources that they need. And what we were hoping to do at this point in the year was sort of introduce that definition. But as you all know from your emails, life gets in the way at times between closing schools and everything else that's happening, so we're not quite there yet, but something, Ms. Pick, I know you'll appreciate, is that this definition of what we define our educational equity initiative in Enfield cannot just be me and Altrissa. And that was the other thing she said, if it's just me, like, everything's fixed, Altrissa's here, I'm not doing it. It has to be ingrained in what we do as a district and as a community. So that, we are engaging with stakeholder input, particularly, starting with our staff, and I found it pretty appropriate that if you look behind you, at the bottom of our logo, there is a motto underneath there. I didn't make that up. It started with the exact same process that we're going through with our definition of educational equity. We're just not ready to share it yet, because we're still engaging in that process of getting input. But that's the level of importance it has to us, because at the end of the day, as you all know, our kids all have different needs, and it's incumbent upon us to make sure they get them. And we couldn't have a better person leading this effort for us, which I promise I'll always be there, but you're the expert. So thank you, Altrissa.
I just want to add that when you had said that, life does come full circle. When I used to go to meetings, you were the principal of Hazerville Memorial, and you were talking about, at the time, the schools were K through six, and they were closing schools, and they were going to be moving kids to your school, the K through two. So life comes full circle, because now you're getting to be with pre-K through high school, so, yeah, yeah. So I think that was something to note.
Superintendent's report?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a bunch of things to cover, so I'll try to go as quickly as I can. One of them, obviously, being what's still on the forefront of everyone's mind, what took place in Texas last week. I won't go through all the details, as members of the parents who might be listening, and this is really an appeal to them. You know, I outlined some of the security measures that we take place in our schools. I want parents to know that we obviously take the safety and security of our schools as our highest priority, and the safety of our kids, your kids, and our staff members. So I won't go through everything that was listed in the communication, other than just to add that sometimes in a letter, tone doesn't always come across, and I just wanted to sort of say for the cameras that the tone of that was very somber. I don't want to write a letter like that ever again. But in the meantime, one of the things I have to implore families are, we do take every potential threat very seriously, even if it's just something said in jest. The challenge that we face is we're not involved on things like social media with your kids. And although your, our teachers do an amazing job, and our staff members do an amazing job of knowing their kids, they're not there 24 hours a day. They'll notice if a student is off on a particular day, but the person who's going to know that better is going to be you as a family, or even I'm imploring our students. You know your friends better than your teacher does, better than I do. Please, if there's any concern, or you see something that you find to be, you know, a bit out of character of a classmate, one of the things that all of our buildings stress to our kids is, you can't be afraid to say something, and we do everything we can to allow you to remain confidential. I know it's challenging, I have teenage daughters myself, they don't want to rat out their friend. That's okay. I'd rather be wrong there. But I implore families, if you're watching, parents, you know your kids, you know, we don't have the ability to get on every student's social media platform. And also for our students who are watching, you know your friends better than we do. So please, do not be afraid of reaching out to a trusted adult if there's something that you see that's of a concern. But I also want parents to walk away from there, turn the TV off tonight if you're watching, to know that, you know, we do take this as serious as you would hope, because these are not just your kids, they're our kids. And all of us, whether you have, you know, I said it very plainly in my letter, I have school-age kids myself, so when something like this happens anywhere, whether it's, you know, 2,000 miles away or 30 miles up the road, it shakes us all to our core. But please understand that we do everything we possibly can, and I want to just highlight once again, we're fortunate in this community to have a partnership with the Enfield Police Department. There's a lot of times where kids do come forward and say something, and it's, whether it's, you know, 3 o'clock in the afternoon or 2 o'clock in the morning, Chief Fox picks up his phone, and we thoroughly investigate anything that could be even considered out of the ordinary, because we'd rather inconvenience someone than, you know, have a student try to do something that can cause harm to themselves or someone else. So I just hope people can walk away with that. I know it's hard to accept right now, because this is still very, very much raw for all of us, but please understand, there might be things that you don't see, and that's okay, those are intentional. But it doesn't mean that we're not constantly evaluating, constantly keeping up, you know, making sure that we're making continuous improvements to how we keep your kids safe. Now's a good opportunity, we've had some lively discussions in this room in the last, you know, couple of years. What I'm about to tell you, the board's aware of this, but the community may not be, there's been a lot of conversation about our status as an alliance district. This might be one of the crazier things I've ever had to say. We are, we have been designated as an alliance district. Typically, the alliance network is made up of 33 districts throughout the state of Connecticut that are identified through different indicators, as I shared last meeting. The reason that there hadn't been opportunities for that designation to expand is because in order for that 33 was capped, you'd have to get, you know, someone would have to graduate out. Well, I believe it was in the midnight hour of the legislative session, they expanded the alliance network to 36 districts from 33, so there were none graduating out. And what that means for us, and again, it's pretty ironic that we introduced the importance of equity tonight at this meeting with what I'm about to share, the main focus of the alliance network is obviously aligning district resources for targeted improvements for academic achievement, based on socioeconomic status, everything that we discussed earlier. The way that that grant is designated is the state takes your fiscal year 2012 ECS calculation, and they compare it to the fiscal year 22 ECS calculation, and that delta becomes your alliance grant. And that grant gets peeled away from what the town receives in ECS funding and gets designated directly to the school district. And in turn, I know there's been a lot of discussion about our plans and things like that, that plan is solely centered on that, what your grant funding is going to be used for. What I was made aware of at, once the legislative session was completed, is that although the definition of the alliance network has changed, I don't know what it is, they may have told me, but what I'm about to tell you is the reason why I didn't listen to that part. And the three new districts that are joining the network are going to have a different funding mechanism than the other three existing alliance network. So that look back from 2012, from 2022 to 2012, and everyone's grant would be based on that. In our case, that would be about $1.5 million. For the three new districts, our look back is only going back one year, which is fiscal year '23, current, to last year fiscal year '22, which in our case, it was, ECS was flat-funded, so our alliance district grant is currently zero. So my first question was, wait a minute, how is that equitable? The other 33 districts are still getting their original grant, the three new ones who meet the criteria and have the need, but we don't have the funding in an equitable manner as the other 33 districts. And the response I shared, this was with the board in an email, the response I got was, you're right. We don't know when this happened. It happened sort of at the midnight hour, and I don't have a rational explanation, other than the way that ECS has been funded in these three communities is more in line, there's not as much catch-up that the other 33 districts have. I don't have a clear, defined answer to that at this point. What I did do, because it was suggested during that meeting, was to reach out to our legislators, and which I did. And I had a conversation with Representative Arnone and Senator Kissel, I do have a call on Representative Hawley, we haven't had connected yet, and they were unaware that this change in funding format happened. And again, and what I'll share with Senator Kissel, share with me, is, you know, whether I voted for the budget or not, this is not a partisan issue, this is a community issue in which I represent, so anything we can do to help. Representative Arnone was calling me at all hours, trying to get answers as to what happened. Again, not pointing fingers at anyone, it's just reality. The question that I gave back to the state was, if we are designated as an alliance district and we get an alliance grant, I'm responsible for submitting an alliance plan, which, quite frankly, we were already working on, but if I'm not getting any money, do I have to submit the plan? Again, not going to break any laws, but to me, it didn't sound reasonable to submit a plan for nothing. To basically show us how you're going to spend the money, well, it's pretty easy, there's no money, I don't need to show you anything. The conversation initially was, I don't blame you, we're not going to require a plan out of you, but let's let the dust settle and see where all the other pockets of things may or may not have come in through the legislative session. The problem sometimes, and those of you who are new on the board, you'll understand, that anytime there's a conclusion of a legislative session, we won't actually get the narrative and the explanation of the law changes until some point mid-late summer. Even our attorneys take some time to figure out, okay, what just passed, and what does this mean for us? So I don't have any of that, it's all premature, but I know since it's been a pretty robust topic in these parts for, since it was let out, that we were in contention, I felt obligated to share with the community that, to best of my knowledge, we are labeled as an alliance district. The definition of alliance district has changed, because it's no longer 33 districts, and I don't have the official one. And at present time, we're not getting any additional funding for it. Now, that's just the alliance grant. By being designated as an alliance district, there are some benefits. One is that you do get that level of protection from your budget being reduced, so that still applies to us. The other is, there are additional funding mechanisms for capital improvement projects, grants, competitive things that are only eligible through the alliance network. We are still eligible for that, but the big sticker shock was, what do you mean, we're not getting a grant? So as I get more clarification, I certainly will share with you, and the next time we have a meeting, I hope to have more to share with, but I know there's a lot of people who have been asking that question. who have been asking that question. And I apologize to town council members who, and one sitting in the audience, tried to pass the budget and all this was up in the air. You know, I can share with you an apology that I gave to our town manager at 2 o'clock that afternoon where you guys were about to pass a budget and she already had pulled out the ECS money she didn't think she was getting, only to find out later that she got it. So, and if I didn't call her, she wouldn't have known that night. So everything was a little backwards. And I'm going to stop there because my frustration will get the best of me, but that's what happened, that's the facts as I have them today, and as I know more, I will certainly keep the board apprised of that and obviously share that with the community as well. Next, I shouldn't say last, there's a couple of things I have to add on here, you know, but these will be much quicker. With regards to this year's school calendar, in addition to us going a little bit later, this doesn't require board action, I have the ability to do this, so it's not a change to the calendar, but I want to give families and staff members and kids as much notice as possible. Obviously, that last week of school is going to be challenging for a number of reasons, one being the weather because we're so late, and I think I took away Mr. Rider's thunder on this one, but I'm going to designate the last week of school, June 20th through the 23rd, for everyone except Henry Barnard, Henry Barnard's the 24th, as early release days with lunch. With the exception of the 24th for Henry Barnard, that would be an early release day without lunch. I'm doing that for a number of reasons. One, as I stated earlier, you know, when you get into late June, today's a perfect example, you know, we're trying to get kids outside as much as I can and it's ridiculously hot outside. Our buildings, our elementary schools are not air-conditioned, you know, so that's always a challenge at the end of the school year. The other thing that we have to factor in is next school year, for the first time in two years, we're using our cafeterias again. That's the good news. The bad news is, right now, our cafeterias are all packed with stuff. And right now, our staff doesn't have any time to get their stuff out of the cafeterias and resort them back into their classrooms. So I have to designate some time for our staff members to get their buildings ready for full capacity again next year. So there's some positives to it, and I'd never like to make a decision like this without giving parents as much notice as possible because I understand there's daycare implementations on this and, you know, if anyone didn't have Hostways' number, I'm sure he'd be willing to partner if there's any confusion on this for families, but we also have busing concerns for that week, so I want to get ahead of it now and just designate that that last week, starting the 20th, will be early release days. That, last big announcement, obviously, there was news today that we unfortunately had to shut down our Enfield Transitional Learning Academy, which is a program at Henry Barnard, Henry Barnard, won't work, live at Barnard anymore, at Alcorn. I want to commend the staff at ETLA and most importantly, a staff member who's not at ETLA, Allison Laws, one of our special ed coordinators. You may know her better as the makeshift assistant slash principal for two weeks at Henry Barnard in order to keep us open when we would have had to close longer due to staff shortages. And although it was a holiday yesterday, it's a Sunday night text I get from Allison that says, okay, I'll be at ETLA tomorrow. The problem is, we had a number of staff members that are out and they will be out for the remainder of the week. We have a number of students who are out, and it just wasn't feasible or safe to run the program for the remainder of the week. So unfortunately, we did have to shut down ETLA. We should have done it last night, but by the time we had the realization, I think it was 9 o'clock, and I didn't think it was fair to parents to bring that on them at 9:00 PM. And the great thing about that program, and Kathy will clip this, keep going back to snow days, there are times where some of our students at snow days, they still show up at Alcorn anyway, and I wanted to make sure we reached out personally. And I thank this, our team, our ETLA team, our special ed team, for personally reaching out to all those families today to let them know the circumstances for the remainder of the week. Again, I'm tired of giving COVID updates, but that's kind of it. We're still touch and go, as you can see, it can happen at any point. I'm hopeful that I don't have to ever do this again, but, you know, I'll, the 24th can't come quick enough from that perspective. And last but not least, one of our board members was honored with a special recognition and a very special award, and I don't believe he was able to participate in that, so I'm going to kick my portion of this back to the chair for her to address this very special recognition.
One of the teachers who attended grabbed your gift and she asked me to give it to you this evening, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry you missed it.
Check it out. Ooh, it's glass. It's wrapped up.
Oh.
Very nice.
Thank you very much to the both of you and to Michelle Wilcox, a fantastic educator here in Enfield, for I don't want to say how long, but I appreciate this and I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person, but thank you very much.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on to item seven, approve Head Start Cost of Living and Quality Improvement Grant.
This was the one in our packet?
Yes.
Okay.
So in your packet is information about, from Jaclyn Valley requesting the board's approval for Head Start's COLA and Quality Improvement Funding for 2022. The packet is a letter from Ms. Valley and a breakdown of the budget narrative and budget justification, as well as a governing board approval statement. So at this point, it'd be appropriate if the board wished to take action, take a motion on approving these two items.
Do I have a motion to approve the Head Start Cost of Living and Quality Improvement Grant?
Still moved.
Moved by Dr. Kalman, seconded by Ms. Pickett. Sensing none, roll call?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuschman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamry?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item eight, approve the Lester J. Bodley Scholarship recipients?
So since 2004, the Enfield Board of Ed has announced the recipients of the Lester J. Bodley Memorial Scholarship at a board meeting. These scholarships are awarded each year to a male and female graduating student from Enfield High School, and such donations are permissible under the town charter. And closed in your packet is the information provided by the Enfield High School Common Application Selection Committee, but due to student confidentiality, we're recommending that both students be referred to as Student A and Student B instead of announcing their names publicly.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Lester J. Bodley Scholarship recipients A and B?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Hamry, seconded by Mr. Ungeyer. Any discussions? Sensing none, roll call?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuschman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamry?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item nine, approve the EHS Safe Grad donations for the graduating class of 2022?
So every year, the board makes a donation to Safe Grad and, in the amount of $1,000, that goes to the Safe Grad Committee?
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept?
Still moved.
The EHS Safe Grad donations for the graduating class? Moved by Mr. Ryder, seconded by Mr. Hamry. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuschman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamry?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
I'm going to abstain due to my involvement with Safe Grad.
Motion passes.
Item 10, approve the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At that, as I said earlier, the town council adopted our fiscal year 22-23 budget at a meeting earlier, or, yeah, earlier this month. And the amount that was adopted was $73,275,252, which represents a 1.62% increase. As you recall, the board's request was 2.31% increase. The reduction that the board actually received throughout the appropriation from the council was the $500,000 voluntary reduction that the board had taken throughout the budget process. You recall, it was part of your budget presentation to the council was, this is what we know in January, but things change. We were able to afford those reductions in our staffing, in our financing request based on some personnel shifts and we did, quite honestly, we didn't have any retirements in January when we presented the budget, we do now, as well as some adjustments to the benefit line. So there are still, in this number is representative, there's no programming or staffing cuts whatsoever. It's essentially everything you asked for with the amount that you were able to voluntarily tell them you didn't, you no longer needed in order to help the town achieve a budget that was palatable for both sides. So at this point, you do have a responsibility to adopt the final budget number. That $500,000 reduction will come in the area of some of the retirements, as well as our, our insurance lines, and from that point, you'll get a new book once that number's adopted and then we register that with the town council.
Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget? Motion by Mr. Hamry, seconded by Mr. Ryder. Any discussions, questions?
I just had a quick question. How soon will you have the new book with the new numbers for us, just to have?
Is, Lorraine is going to kill me, but, soon? It's actually only one thing we, the problem is, it's not just like, take 500 grand, it's actually, we go through positions on where we receive some of the, some of the reductions, so it shouldn't take all that long. Probably within, in the next week or two.
Okay.
Shooting for, before your last, next meeting.
Thank you.
Roll call, Kathy?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kuschman?
Yes.
Mr. Hamry?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Executive session, do we have a reason to go into executive session?
We do. And we also have a need to go into what's called a non-meeting for collective bargaining strategy, so that would be for, we would adjourn the meeting after executive session and then, but we would not be returning.
Okay.
Prior to adjournment, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Prior to adjournment, I just had a quick question. So speaking of the calendar change that you just made for the last week of the school year, that Monday through Thursday for all but Barnard and Monday through Friday for Barnard, all early releases with lunches, does our administration know that yet, or is that something that we are hearing and they're going to hear?
Yeah, they're going to be mad at me. The first person I had to make sure knew this was Smith, because there's a lot riding on that, and I'm going to send something to them tonight. There were a couple of things I was waiting for at the midnight hour.
I only ask because I'm looking at the calendars on Enfield PTO and I know a couple of schools, like, they're having like their grade five awards assembly on that Monday or their field day, is rain date, might be that Monday, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knows, and there's no PM classes at Stowe when there's an early release, so